Very good. And the President of the Board of Education, newly elected, Dottie Oden. Sorry, Dottie. I have a habit of missing somebody, more than one, too. I'm sorry about that. Okay. The first thing on the agenda tonight is to address the question on what time this committee would like to meet on a permanent basis. We normally have met at 5:30, and I'm wondering if that's okay with everybody.
Yep. I would vastly prefer if we could bump it back half an hour to an hour. My children have karate until 5:30, so getting here from karate at 5:30 is a challenge for me. We're working it. We worked it tonight. We will continue to work it. But even that half hour, so I could drop them off with a babysitter or something, would be extraordinarily helpful.
We've always meet on the third Monday, too, so that's... How about Ms. Timmons?
Anytime would be okay.
Would an hour be good for you, too?
Yes, that would be great, yep.
So I guess we'll start meeting at 6 o'clock on the third Monday. Sorry about that, Dr. McKinney. You're gonna have to go to Five Guys early.
No problem. I'll call ahead.
Thank you for doing that. So tonight, Dr. McKinney is gonna talk about his program review. He's gonna give us an update on all the programs that were in your packet, so you'd like to address that, start. I wanted to ask you, though, first, how did you want to proceed? Did you want to go through the whole list of programs first, and then ask questions, have us ask questions, or do each program separately?
We could go program at a time.
Okay.
For each file.
That would be good for me.
But then I would like to have some time to just talk about a plan forward and evaluation part, so if there are questions around that, can we just kind of lump them together? Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay.
You want to talk about that first? So when you're introducing...
I can do it first. That kind of makes sense.
Whatever.
That's a good idea. So there are five things here I think the committee needs to be aware of, and we're in various stages of design, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation. And typically, things like this are included in a curriculum management plan. So I went back and found the previous one, which is from '07 and runs until 2017. So this is kind of in need of some updating and revision. And I guess the question on the table for a number of these programs is next steps. So we have some that are kind of towards the end of the road in monitoring and evaluation, and we have others that are up at the beginning in terms of just being piloted and evaluated and put together. So I guess that's a good framework to think about as we're looking at all these. I'd like to have the opportunity to revise this plan, work with some people, come back and present that as a means to evaluating our curriculum, because this, you know, given some of the circumstances that have happened, this kind of systemic review hasn't always been done on a regular basis. And we want all of our curriculum initiatives to be in alignment and kind of pushing the district in one straight direction, so.
That's cool. Yes.
May I ask a question? So in the news this week, this Betsy DeVos, I don't know if you're familiar, the Secretary of Education, announced that Common Core was dead. So here we are, looking at curriculum based on, and which was never voted on, Ms. Fantoir, if I'm not mistaken, this board never voted on Common Core accepting. So one thing I appreciate, which you folks from Massachusetts know very well, is that Massachusetts had pretty much one of the best curriculums in the country. I think it was the top-rated curriculum for a very long period of time. So if we're going to go through a step-by-step, and it sounds like it's gonna be a rigorous curriculum review since it hasn't been done in so many years, is it possible that we can perhaps look to Massachusetts and bring some of that curriculum into functionality here in Nashville? Not their Common Core one, but the one before that. And I don't... Was that based on the MCAS? Is that what...
I mean, we...
Is that right? I'm looking at Dr. Mosley, because I know he knows. I know I don't, but proper name is...
The answer to your question is that Common Core was aligned to the Massachusetts frameworks as well. And so there are some commonalities that the Common Core has in terms of New Hampshire, too. The best example that I can give you are the new science standards that came into effect in Massachusetts, probably like two years ago. And believe it or not, the new science standards in Massachusetts were actually, were in the process of being adopted into the state legislation as well as into the standards as well. So many of, like, for instance, you mentioned the MCAS test. The MCAS test was not aligned to the new standards, in this case, the science standards. So both Massachusetts and New Hampshire were right in the same boat. So kind of coming full circle here a little bit, most of Massachusetts standards are aligned to Common Core. Most of those Common Core standards were, the intent was for Massachusetts students to take the PARC exam. Massachusetts backed away from the PARC exam. Now they're doing MCAS 2.0, which is just a different variation of MCAS. I think that kind of, you're asking around whether you want to adopt Common Core or not. I mean, that's something the board can have a discussion at a later date. I think it needs to be aligned to something. And if you want to take a look at Massachusetts standards, and I wouldn't say you have to adopt everything, but you might want to maybe borrow a couple of things here and there and see if it fits for the district.
So my...
Were you referring to the one that was before Common Core?
Yes.
The one that everybody raves about?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the one he would like to see reviewed and incorporated, if possible. Yeah, Dr. McKinney.
Before we go down that road, can we maybe come back to that at a certain point in looking what our state obligations are?
Absolutely, but I just wanted to throw that in there.
What are the federal guidelines are along with state guidelines? Because at the same time, while you're looking to other states, New Hampshire was fourth in the country in terms of public education. So there are many things that are going on well around in different places, and I think the challenge for us is, it probably takes about five years to come comfortable with the curriculum. And if we keep moving curriculum around, it's a challenge for everyone. So if you want to, I think we're all results-oriented, if you want to have good, solid, adult results, that means refining practice, and that takes time. So I would just kind of ask that we come back to that at another point and compare state frameworks, standards, how our curriculum aligns with that. And I can include that information here or provide it separately. But that road of change, we're doing it now in some curriculum, and we're getting great results, but it's also, it's a continual change for teachers every year of a new program that's coming out and refining and relearning.
I do want to ask you one question. You said New Hampshire was third or fourth in the country? But our average, we are on average with the state of New Hampshire, which is around 30% in reading math.
I'm just talking about the average. I can forward you the information.
No, but what I'm saying, if New Hampshire is supposedly an example of a high level of achievement, I know the numbers are still in that, you know, that we're about, our school is about where the average is in the state of New Hampshire in terms of 25, 30% in math and in the 50s, I believe, for both reading. For me, that's not acceptable. So if New Hampshire is excelling compared to the country, that just shows you how much, it's still a standardized test that people are measured against, right? So, but I would look forward to that information also.
Please keep in mind, you're quoting numbers and percentages. Understand that you have 11,200 students, and the next comparable district is Manchester. And then you're jumping down to districts that have, N is the number, so you have districts that have 1,000 kids, districts that have 500 kids. Please keep in mind that you have diversity within your student population. You have first-generation students coming to our schools. You have a growing number of ELL students. You have students that speak multiple languages, and you have more special education care for a variety of needs. So understand that when you're comparing yourself to other districts, just be aware of that. I would encourage us to, let's see if we can get through Gosh presentation, but also think about looking at ourselves and measuring growth within our own district.
Yes, Dr. McKinney.
And the state of New Hampshire just redesigned their assessment system, so now's a nice time to look at what that's gonna look like, because the state came out of the consortium. We don't have Sback items. We have a little bit more state-level control over what math and ELA and science are gonna look like. So in June, we can report out on what that's gonna look like and have a better idea of how the accountability for our students is gonna be measured, so.
You're saying that Sback has changed?
Sback is now SAS.
SAS?
SAS, the new acronym.
Okay, so in June, you want to come back and review that for us?
I will do that. Can we do that in May? We have...
Oh, hey, do it next month if you like.
I would like a little more time than that, because we talked about data review in June, so maybe this will provide a framework for that before we speak about that in June.
New assessment. Yes, Mrs.... What does SAS stand for?
New Hampshire.
State Assessment Standard.
Mr.?
I'm sorry. State Assessment System.
State Assessment System. Well, that's pretty simple.
So one of the nice possibilities about that is we no longer belong to the consortium of states that are part of Sback, and we never saw the questions and all that stuff. So the state is saying we can have some input in what those items look like, and they're open to having teachers, administrators over the summer look at some of those questions, develop them, see how they fit in the curriculum. So I do think that's a nice opportunity, but I can bring more information for that.
But in May, what are you gonna report on if they're not gonna do the work until the summer?
Oh, that's refining the test items that are already given. The window, the window goes...
Oh, okay. So you'll get to review them, what they've already come up with?
Yep.
And, okay. And how do you get on that committee to do that? Is it someone from every district, or...
No, it's voluntary. You have to sign up, yeah.
And you will sign up?
I will have, make sure we have participation.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that.
But the...
I wasn't asking you particularly, you know, directly, but it would be nice, but, you know, you send somebody that's quite qualified, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, we'll have a team there, yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
They have a lot of interesting stuff, yeah. So I think it's gonna be good for the state.
Yeah. I love the way the state comes out with these things and then decides they don't want them anymore, but...
Well, the other good news for this one is it's a seven-year contract, so this should stay in place for a longer period of time, which is a nice package deal.
I would like to talk with them up there and say, how do you expect our teachers ever to produce good students if they have to change every few years? I just, it's just mind-boggling, but anyhow.
It's still based on the same standards.
Yes, the Common Core?
Yes, but we do have a little more autonomy with that. So we're not totally shifting what the assessment's gonna be, but we're kind of refining it and having a little more state control.
Then have they given us leeway to change Common Core stuff, or...
I'm not aware of that just yet.
Okay, so good. All right. It'll save Mr. Greeno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was under the impression, and Dr. McKinney can tell me if I'm wrong, but that we're really looking at three different things. We're looking at assessment, we're looking at curriculum, and we're looking at Common Core, which is not the curriculum. So basically, our curriculum is up to us, how we want to set the curriculum, but the curriculum is sort of driven by Common Core.
Sure.
Which are the standards, and that's only in math and in English. And science is a whole separate animal, because we have the Next Generation Science standards, which we have a pilot program for one year. So I think when we, we do have a lot of leeway, I guess my question is, as far as curriculum goes, you know, changes to that, we have to, I guess, Common Core kind of drives it, but we are free to, to, you know, to...
Revising.
Tweak, yeah, tweak the curriculum or revise it, however. We're autonomous when it comes to curriculum. So this whole discussion about Common Core, like, you know, it's dead, or, you know, we don't have to worry about it anymore, or whatever, but, I mean, it's still, it's still there. It's still part of the state. The state had adopted it, but, so I just wanted to know if I'm on the right track.
You are, and we have a lot invested in what we've done so far, like the report cards, competencies at the high school, moving that requires systemic change. It would take it multi-years, so.
Okay, yeah.
I think we want to have a document like this and kind of evaluate across the board where we are, and then make some informed decisions going from there.
Okay.
And now, with the possibility of getting some committee work going, we have a nice opportunity to build consensus around what are our strengths of our programs, what are our needs, and how do we report.
It's always more successful when you involve the people who are going to be using it to...
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fantoir.
Thank you. I understand that the department, the commissioner was gonna review the math and the ELA standards. He told us a year ago that he was in the process of doing that. But as Mr. Greeno says, these standards, these state standards are not required. We could build, they're just the minimum floor. We build our own, so Common Core is there. If they change to something else, that's still there. We still build our own curriculum based on that. I had one question about the Next Generation Science. We had a pilot, and we made a motion in April not to adopt this until we had it one year, we had an evaluation process. So we're not in this, in this schedule for tonight, we're not adopting that. We're waiting for that evaluation report. Is that correct?
Right, I'm giving you a middle school science update. This is in the beginning phase. It says in here where the motion was, on April 10th, 2017. This is just giving the board an update on where the pilot is.
So let's get started with your, we won't be able to, within our two-hour period.
Right.
I always like to keep my meetings to two hours.
Okay.
If possible.
So the first one is OGAAP, and this page here provides a framework for OGAAP. And any of you who experienced homework in Eureka or OGAAP, this is, provides a framework for strategies for students. And this has been brought into the district back in 2012 with a grant, and all of our, a number of teachers, 225, have been trained in this framework. And what teachers do is they give a series of assessments, and they're formative assessments, so they get to know the students' strengths, weaknesses, and they're trying to move them up this framework from additive to multiplicative, so they can be fast, efficient, accurate in their math and problem-solving strategies. So with this program, the grant that was covering some of the expenses here has closed out. And we're at a crossroads here for this program in terms of bringing this to our math and content team and steering committee, because originally before this, when this was brought in, we didn't have Eureka. And now with Eureka onboard, a lot of the problem-solving strategies that are in here are also in Eureka. So the next step is looking for the math team to come together and look for a recommendation of, is this a supplementary resource for teachers? Is this something we can embed into Eureka? Or is this a resource that works for some kids and maybe not for all kids? And our Tier One would continue to be Eureka. So this is something that's kind of at the evaluative stage, towards the end of the road, and trying to find how do we bring this, or continue the work that we've had for a number of years and continue it in the math curriculum.
Okay, I got tons of questions.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. We started in 2012. So were there costs associated for those years from 2012 to 2017? I'd like to know the total cost for that, if so. And the 2018 year, is that at our total expense of, I think it's what, what do we have here? $60,000 for this year, or is it...
Oh, so that's the end, so the end of this year, yes, and that's money that was spent at the beginning of this year and through the grant. So the, may I answer one thing?
Excuse me, yeah, I'm sorry.
So these sheets that come from, like, did some archive digging?
That's Jen Sousin's cabinet, yeah.
This packet, I just gave you the first page, is a multi-page packet that has a lot of the budget accounting and all that stuff, so I can forward that on.
Yeah, it might be nice to let us know what the total cost is on that. All right. So it's a 12 through K, a K through 12 program, or is it, and we just implemented K through eight, or what?
This is really K-5.
K-5, okay. And I had, when I was looking at this, I was thinking, okay, once you've taught the child to look at a problem in many different ways, what goes on after that? Anything? I mean, what kind of training? Like, here, you know, you teach them the different ways of looking at a problem. I think that's what the multiple... Are they expected to pick one of these methods to do, to figure, or can they use any method to solve a problem, or...
This is almost like a continuum. We want kids moving to the top. So we don't want to have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who are down here doing repeated addition, 3 plus 3 plus 3 plus 3 is 12.
Correct.
That's gonna be a long road through middle school. So we want kids moving up and becoming more proficient to the strategies that are at the top.
So there's, I mean, there's just three different ways that you can look at this problem, so, or four different ways, I'm sorry, five, six, I don't know. So they, once you, they, once that you have taught this level, the student is, kind of leans towards one method to do all their math in? And is that kind of like the end of the OGAAP training, or...
But also knowing that some of the other strategies are still out there, because that one method they're comfortable with may work with certain problems, but may not work with all problems, so they kind of have to keep the whole framework in line. If you go into schools, you'll see this in poster form all over the place, and if you were to ask kids to solve a problem using the area model, they could do that, but would they, sometimes teachers would ask, is that the best strategy for this? The answer could be yes, but also another way would be to move up to being multiplicative.
Okay. Do the teachers feel that this was a useful program? Have you any way of measuring success that this program has helped?
We have some data on this. I think it's been awesome in terms of teacher content knowledge, of knowing this framework, and so many teachers are more comfortable in literacy than math, so this has been awesome professional development and also good formative assessment. Again, our, our challenge now is, I wouldn't say duplicating, but they're very similar in what we're doing here and with Eureka. So what's the best course going ahead that we're not, you know, doing two things at once? Can we just kind of streamline it so that it works with one common curriculum for all kids?
Well, it would be nice to save the money.
This is low-cost going forward, so it's minimal cost, but I don't have a problem saving money, I guess.
Dr. Mosley responded to that one.
No, there's a couple of things. I concur with Dr. McKinney saying, just so I want to keep some things in mind. One of the challenges with the former math program is that there are teachers supplementing the material, so as a result, as a result of teachers supplementing materials from the former program, kids left the elementary school with a very different math experience. Some of them just learned one way, some of them didn't.
Wasn't consistent, too.
Correct. So this is one way of bringing that stability to our elementary schools. The other piece of this, and this ties into a little bit about what was talked about at the teacher negotiations, is pretty public, too, as well, is that when we lose teachers at the elementary school, or when they leave, we have new teachers coming in. And with that, there's a sense of professional development that we have to train them in this program. So I would just caution of saying, like, it's not one and done. We certainly have to make sure, refresh our current teachers who are using it, but also our new teachers coming in. Some of them have had exposure to this, and some of them have not.
That was my seventh question here. Was it consistently used throughout the schools, or left up to the principals to decide whether they use it or not? But I think that's spelled out here in the bottom of, on the program, the report.
Prior to 2015, it looks like they were training schools, but since I've been here, that's been consistently administered the last two years.
I often wonder why we don't train everybody at the same time, and why we just did, well, like, in 2012 and 13, we did VR, MP, and CH on multiple... Why didn't we change, teach all of them at one time? I mean, to me, it seems like it'd be quicker implementation if you do it all at one.
True. I could go back and look, and there could be cost restrictions, there could be scheduling, and it's...
It's not, it's just a kind of a rhetorical question, you know? I just find that kind of strange.
You have a question down there?
Yeah, I, let me get mine out first.
Okay.
That's the right of, that's the right of the chairman. She gets to speak first. And I think I have asked all my questions that I, I have some underlying. So was it...
Ms. Raymond, I can wait.
We'll take a committee member first, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious about what this program offers that Eureka Math does not, because, you know, my kids are elementary age. I see all of this. I have seen all of this. And so I'm wondering where the overlap is and where there are things that are covered in one but not the other. And I'm not clear on that.
I would say the biggest advantage is the framework for both kids and teachers in understanding. Here are the range of strategies, and we want you moving from top, I mean, bottom to top, and this is where you want to be when you're leaving. Without that, you have kids and teachers who are a little more attached to the program and not have a broader sense of what's the best road forward. This kind of gives that framework. And you're right, it was before Eureka, and you probably see some of these pictorial models being pretty similar to what's in there.
We just did this tonight.
Right. So I think that's...
Right from the beginning to the end with my kids, so, yeah.
So I think, one, the framework, and then, two, the assessments that come with it in terms of helping teachers understanding where kids are. And you're right, you could get that with Eureka, but you wouldn't have a perspective to point it to of saying you're at this stage when you really need to move up, rung on the ladder.
And then the second part of my question is, the grant has ended. What are we doing? Is there another grant that's available for another few years? Is there other monies? Is there someone who can, you know, request another grant? Is there any way to offset some of that cost again?
Having gone that avenue of looking into what other grants are out there, I think I'm waiting to work with the math content team and the steering committee of what's it gonna look like? Is this supplementary resource, a primary resource? Where does it fit in? Because that would also tie into the amount that it would cost. Right now, it's minimal cost. We have a lot of the binders, we have a lot of the materials from before, so...
So we're not paying $60,000?
No. But like, to Dr. Mosley's point, when new people come in, this is one of the things we do need to set aside some training in the beginning of the summer to bring them up to speed, so they have an understanding of the work that has been done and why.
Yep.
Do you have hold of any grants out there? We have the time to do it, and the resources will certainly go after it. So I think it's a very valid point. I think, you know, rather than use the operation budget to supplement it anyways, we're in the queue.
Wow. Mr. Kaufman, and then Ms. Timmons.
Thank you. Just acronyms, crazy about acronyms. We've got our share. MSP?
Math Science Partnership.
And who are they? Are they a nonprofit organization? Are they a government entity?
Probably, yeah. I can give you more information.
This is government money?
Probably, yeah.
So is it Title II? Because, right, that training is Title II, right?
It's not Title II, no.
Am I right about, right, Title I is, you know, the underperforming schools? Title II is the training, and Title III is the ELL, right? Is it sinking in?
Oh, I understand it.
No, that's a question for myself in terms of the various title categories.
So this is not in Title I, this is not in Title II, it's not in Title III. So I would have to go back and see the funding source of that. This is back to 2012.
Okay, so I have, if I may, Ms. Fantoir. So you said you wanted the students to move from the bottom to the top?
Yep.
This blue page.
For the framework, yep.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, in the bottom category, if you would, there's really three sections here for the people at home who can't see it. So I'm just curious, what grades would you say are in the low end of, of this particular chart? Is this like 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, or...
This is really grades 3, 4, and 5.
So 3 at the bottom, 4 in the middle, and 5 at the top? Or all of this is across all 3?
Yeah, I would say that.
Okay. So may I ask another question? And you said this was for K-1. You said this was from, the ongoing assessment project was K through 5. So what, are we gonna see what is for the lower grades then, since this is just relevant?
What lower grades in K through 5?
Excuse me, let me, let me try and be a little clearer. What I thought I understood Dr. McKinney to say is that this O-GAP program dealt with kindergarten through fifth grade. So my question had to do with this O-GAP chart that we were given, the blue one. And I was trying to understand which grade dealt with each section of this chart. And if I understand what Dr. McKinney just said, this entire page applies to all third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Did I understand you correctly, Dr. McKinney?
Yeah. I misspoke. So it's really, O-GAP is really grades three, four, and five.
Okay, great.
I was thinking of another grade.
Oh, so when you said K5, you're correcting it's three, four, and five.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, because, thank you. That, because I was trying to understand what grade, which math was appropriate for what grade is really what the underlying question was. And.
I think you've overextended your limit. I'm going to ask Ms. Timmons to speak, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Come back to you.
Yeah, this is just quick, I'm talking to McKinney. I have a question about costs, minimizing the cost. Is it possible to train the trainer? And then we won't have that problem in the future and not reunit the bill?
We have one, I want to say at least two people in district that have been trained, that facilitate our training. They've gone to all the trainings. And our, one of our curriculum specialists, who's also our math acceleration person, went to the conferences past summer.
Okay. So just for clarification, so when a new teacher is in, that trainer would implement or get that teacher caught up to snuff on what's going on at that particular time?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
But we also have, and then our math coach goes around to all the schools and she meets with the teachers in their grade level and then does trainings in the buildings as well. So she'll do some walkthroughs, classroom observations, and then she kind of has a grade level PLC where they can bring in questions and help her out.
Did you have a question?
Oh, no. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm just curious, you think this is likely to be requested during the budget cycle?
I don't believe so, no. I think this is something we can manage ourselves going forward with minimal cost.
Well, I think I'm asking a different question. So when we approve a budget, when we start going through that process in a few weeks, would you expect this amount to be in there for this purpose? I'll ask the question now.
All right, just to interject here. All right, I'm sorry, Dr. McKinney.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I take the question?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think when we talk about budget, everything is on the table when we talk about developing. I mean, we're looking at professional development, we're looking at curriculum, we're looking at some costs here that are, that we inherited. So to say that this one thing is or isn't going to be in the budget, I think it's way too premature at this point. We're still trying to get the numbers from all departments. So the answer to your question is, is it too early to determine yes and no? We're not sure at this point.
Thank you.
That brings up the question then, when do you think you're going to determine the next step?
Well.
Hopefully before the budget.
If things wrap up at the end of the month, like we're hoping they would, two months after then, maybe within a month to two months.
Say March, huh?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. As long as you've got money to fund it, that's what it is. Are there any other questions on O-GAP? Moving right along then, but we'll do Eureka. Eureka, I found it.
Yep, so we're in kind of our second year of Eureka. And we've had 215 teachers trained over the past two years. This year, we've done some planning with interventions for kids in partnership with the Title I teachers, interventionists, special education. We have common documents across K5. We have some common resources. The two other things that we've been working with our early learners are queezing air rods and number cards. We have a math team that goes out, including the math coach and the curriculum specialists. We have some common assessments. So this year, our pacing has really picked up. And our sixth grade teachers are saying that our kids are coming up with a lot more knowledge, content proficiency. And they're asking for some of the training and lingo, if you will, that's in Eureka. Because if the kids know it and they don't, then it's hard for them to help them out.
It's kind of embarrassing, isn't it?
Well, that's one way, yeah. So that's really exciting. So we have a buzz with teachers at the middle school looking to partner with our middle school specialists and our math coach and looking at how can we bring some of those strategies up there and have a kind of a continuum for math that's not just isolating K5 and then they learn some, something totally do with the middle school and something totally do with the high school. So now we're getting kind of a K12, a K8 continuum for curriculum going on, which is really exciting. So part of the work going forward would be also, this content team and steering committee is going to be a little busy in that they're going to be working to see how can we take best practices in both what's been done at middle school along with the practices at elementary school and find a win-win for kids at the middle school. So we're in kind of a monitoring, kind of piloting phase that goes forward into the middle school. But again, all the news that I keep hearing from the middle schools, they're happy with what kids are coming forth with, so.
I visited a kindergarten class in the summertime. And they had these little rectangles that they used to show. Is that what rods are?
They're different colors?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, I thought that was a great way of showing that seven and three make 10, and five and five make 10. That was really great. That's the only question I had on this one. Ms. Hoensie?
I just have a quick question. We pilot at K to five. Here it says we're piloting seven to nine. Is that really six to eight? Or is that, where are we piloting six?
Yeah, so that's six through nine, I think.
In the high school?
If you look at the roadmap here, it speaks to some of those things. So the PLCs at the middle school have been looking at sixth grade and bringing in some of the materials. And it's kind of moving that way into seventh and then eighth. This work started last year. We had a math acceleration group that came together and revised the path that we have for kids to apply to accelerate through math. And in doing that, we realigned some things at the middle school, which had implications at the elementary. So for example, if you have a student who's really strong in fourth grade math and along with a parent and teacher recommendation, they could apply to take sixth grade math and take a two-year jump. So that's part of the process. And in doing that, we've kind of realigned our curriculum and some of the mapping that we do up at the middle and high school.
Okay, but in the grade nine, wouldn't it be a high school course then? I mean, that's packaged differently. We have this Eureka in a ninth grade course.
They're using some of the resources, just like our sixth grade has looked to some of the fifth grade. Because when they come in with certain language.
The ones that are deficit.
Maybe, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question on the program costs. And FY17, $192,000. And then FY18, $39,000. Now, that $39,000 come out of that $192,000? Doesn't seem to add up.
So FY17 was a bigger cost because we just adopted the program and we bought everything from the publisher. This past year, we scaled down our costs and we did a lot of the copying and we reduced it. And we had a, a local printer make some of the workbooks. And we kind of went through it, audited some of the workbook and the materials, the ones that we're using, the ones we didn't use, and tried to streamline costs. So we did basically cut it to a very small percentage. And we're going to do that same sort of process again for this coming year and see where we can save some costs. You know, just when we talk about the budget, there is a paper consumption for some of the materials here. So we're trying to figure out, is it better if we just have it copied? Or do you burn the copies at the school level and having them copied there? So where do you want your cost to be initially and just have it printed and sent? Or do you want to have at the school building? So that's something we're evaluating.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yeah, Ms. Timmons, you hit on something. I think there's roughly about $130,000 worth of printing costs associated with this program. So Dr. McKinney, I'm glad to hear, and that was with the outside printer. I think that was put out to bid and that was the lowest contract compared to our own internally burning through the copies. We do almost 27 or 30 million copies a year here at the district.
Is that down like, not Kinko's, it doesn't exist, but that kind? Because the state prison.
That was another avenue we looked.
Did you look at it? I think that's dynamite. No?
Wherever we can find a minimal cost, I think that's what we're looking for. We have a couple of other new options too. The curriculum team is looking at that as well.
I attended an SBA meeting once and one of the people there brought up the fact that they even had them come down and paint the school. So, but it's, printing at least would be a big help.
It would be. I think also this year, we have to kind of be a little prudent and print some overage because we have a lot of kids that come in late, so 5% to 10% maybe of extra copies. And one of the other vendors also offers like timely shipping. So if we got our first quarter of materials, because we do have limited storage space, teachers would get that. And then when second trimester opened, the next shipment would come in. So that for some may be advantageous.
They're usable the next year, though.
This, that cost is consumables.
Yeah. But you can use, if you over.
Oh, yes.
You can use those same.
Right.
Materials the next year. It's not like they change every year.
Uh, no. The changes we would make would be minor. But the initial cost in the beginning was teacher additions, some of the online learning, the videos. That drives up the cost.
Okay. Any other questions on Eureka? I found it. Let's go on with.
I just have a question. I heard that there was a, I don't know what elementary school, but a parent was getting a note from the school to say that they weren't supposed to help with the math at home. Are we working through that? Because I, my understanding was there was U2 modules with Eureka that would train the parents to assist the students. So I was just wondering that we, do we, are we working on that model or?
So what, which is the model you're referring to of not having kids do homework?
I would rather that we sent home assistance, a link to train the parents to help the child, than send home a letter and say, don't help the child. I just thought that was not.
So the homework that's being sent home should be independent and should be related to material that's covered in the class that kids can do proficiently. And teachers, many teachers ask parents not to have the kids like struggle or get to frustration level and just draw a line and sign it and say, we stopped here. And that's it. But for your piece, for the parent education piece, yes, we do need to kind of reach out. That was a big piece last year. That's a piece we have to revisit.
Because that was one of the reasons why we supported it, because it had those modules. And it's so different orientation for parents. I thought that was ideal that we could bring them on board to help.
So we haven't done things like district-wide, but I would say the classroom teachers do a great job of sending things home, newsletters. In the first year, the classwork would be on one side and the homework was on the other. Those are some of the things that some teachers are asking for next year because that's another support for parents when they're doing homework. Sorry.
Yes. I can speak as a parent. At the beginning of the year, for both of my children, I have a second grader and a fourth grader. And this happened last year as well. We got home a colored sheet that said, here's Eureka, here's what it's about, here's how you can like contact us. And then with each new module, there's something sent home that has like little instructions. So that when my child is struggling, I can give you the instructions and then show them how to do it. It doesn't happen with every sheet of homework because once they've given you the instruction for that module, they expect that you then will remember it, I assume. But every time they shift to something new, I do get something home that I can read. So as a parent, for me, it's been very helpful.
And we just, thank you for sharing that. I just want to reiterate that we need to send that information home in hard copy because some of our parents do not have access to a computer. So we try to do our best and certainly we try to bring some consistency and some support to parents. Because listen, I mean, for some of us, and you know, I mean, math might not be our strength and certainly teaching math can be a challenge as well. So anything we can do to support that, we'll certainly do that.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to units of study and writing? My favorite subject.
So the district for the second year has had a summer writing institute where we've trained over 100 teachers over the past two years. I was there this past summer. And this is high-quality professional development for teachers. The trainers come from Teachers College at Columbia and the reading, writing projects. And so this year, this has been our main focus for elementary K5. We've dedicated four early release days to planning and protocols. And we've aligned those so that if you're coming up on unit two, you have an early release week and plan and go through the unit with your colleagues at that grade level and become familiar with what you're teaching ahead of time. We also have pacing guides. We did an administrative workshop. We have support from our curriculum team. And we're really using our assistant principals as our curriculum kind of connection for writing. We meet with them monthly along with our reading specialists and classroom visits. So this is the first year we've had writing district-wide. There are pockets that have used it before in some schools. So the feedback so far is that, you know, pacing, just like Eureka, the first year, it kind of takes time to get used to it. But I was out at Pleasant last week and those second grade students did writing on nonfiction and they were all experts in gorillas, iguanas, all kinds of things. And they had a table of content, they had multiple pages, a picture and some of the facts that they have discovered. And so it's off to a nice start, but that's, obviously we've got a ways to go and it's just our first year.
And how many, how many students and how many schools in the summertime?
You mean for the training?
Oh, well, is that what it was? The training was in the summertime?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then this is for the second year, the district hosted a Columbia University summer writing institute. Is that the same thing as, what do we call this?
Lucy Colkins, the writing.
Lucy Colkins?
Yep.
I looked that up. It's pretty interesting.
So yes, that's been.
So it's going to be this summer that they'll actually be teaching in the summer school how to do this? I'm a bit confused.
No, you're correct. We're currently evaluating where we are with that and how many teachers. Because the challenge is, it's voluntary for teachers to come. They don't get paid, but they get great PD. And it's always a challenge between our summer school programming, new teacher orientation, finding the best time between people's vacations and so many other things. So like was spoken earlier by Ms. Timmons of, is this something we need to have people come from the outside? Or is this something we can handle in-house and maybe do a hybrid of some sort as well? So that's under evaluation right now, I would say.
Okay.
And also, I don't have the program cost in here of purchasing some of the writing kits. That was a longer journey. So I can report back on that at another point. Part of the challenge is finding some of the records for some of these things. So I can give you a better number on what that's been district-wide. Because again, some schools got, you know, their whole school didn't have it and others had pockets of it in different places. So they may have only gotten half their school with the writing kits.
Putting down some action research.
Yeah, I think you will.
Well, okay. Anybody else have any? Yep, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So you spoke to Title I and then you also said district-wide. So I'm a little, I could understand a little more, more, more in depth. So this was done for Title I schools?
No. It was open district-wide, teachers could go.
It says Title I.
That's where it was paid from last year. It was paid out of the Title I grant.
So we use Title I money for all schools? You could do that? I thought they were, I thought Title I funds were limited to Title I schools.
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay. Well, that's nice to know. Okay. But it was district-wide, the implementation, not just at the Title I schools? Okay, thank you.
So George, just a quick clarification. Last year, that's where the administration wanted to devote some of the Title I money for this initiative. And Title I doesn't necessarily exclude other schools from participating. So for instance, you might have, just making this up, 10 teachers and one, one professional development. 10 of them are from Title I schools. The other five are from a non-Title I school. That's okay.
So you can piggyback in that regard?
You can't do it. This, I don't want to get into the laws per se, but you can't take all of Title One funding and devote it to a, a, a non-Title One school.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then we're going on to Study Sync.
So, uh, Study Sync is in grades six to eight. It's our literacy, um, resource at the middle school. This is year one. Uh, the board committed a, kind of a five-year, um, commitment to that. So this year we started with onsite professional development with the publisher. Uh, they've come in and done trainings. We've had our humanities coach who goes out and meets with teachers and does PLCs. Some of our early release days that are district wide have been devoted to that. Uh, we have common expectations. One of the benefits, I think, in why it was selected, it has, um, differentiated instruction capabilities. So for example, if we're all reading one story, I could assign it to my class and the four students would get all different levels suited on where they're reading, but still get the background of reading that same story. So that's one of the features the teachers really like, along with a number of other ones.
So if I'm reading at a fourth grade level, I get a fourth grade version? Is that what you're saying? And if I read in a fifth grade?
Slightly different version, yeah. So they call it multi-leveling. It is pretty fancy, yeah.
Yeah.
And the kids can go on, answer questions and all that feedback goes back to the teacher.
And then you could give the, one child who's reading it for the fifth grade level to kind of boost them up a little bit.
Yep, it has that. It has an ELL component, it has a special education component. So, um, there's a lot to learn there. So we, uh, Ms. Fitzpatrick and I, um, kind of inherited that in working with the interventionist and the humanities coach have kind of worked out a plan that seems to be going well this far. Um, but again, that, we're looking for input from steering committees as well.
It's quite expensive.
That was, what was here when I, uh, came in.
Five-year bundle. When I'm thinking of a five-year bundle, I'm thinking of some, something that we bought just recently that was five years. And was, was varying.
This is something.
Not the same thing. It's not the same thing.
There were history books, I think this.
Was it history, history books? Yeah, okay.
Might have been the civics program or the, the one that we did after.
When I think of bundle, I try to get a better deal for my phone, internet and TV, but.
Well, you know, I'm thinking about that. Eighty-nine dollars sounds a lot better than a hundred and forty for TV and, and not, uh, radio, I mean, phone and the internet. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. A question, when you talk digital instruction, so you, you have Eureka math. I'm just kind of trying to make a bridge between the two things. I know we have extensive printed materials for the Eureka math and, and yeah, you want your kids to look down and solve a math problem. I get that, no problem. But I'm just curious with this program, uh, when you speak powerful digital instruction, so what percentage of instruction is, say, hard copy materials? Versus going out on the internet and going to a website or whatever they do for the digital side of the instruction? I'm just curious what a, a day and, what a lesson mix might be on any given day.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if I could give, it varies from teacher, because the second workshop, we had a, a national speaker that the publisher sponsored that came in that really, um, speaks to having technology and kind of centers in your classroom and building more of that in there. And there's some teachers that really take into that. Um, there are aspects of the program that teachers really like. For example, they do the, kind of these quick hits where they read a, um, a newsfeed article and they have to kind of like tweet about it and so many characters to kind of get the main idea or whatever, that literacy skill to work on. But I think that's one of the things we're evaluating. We have expectations out there right now of how many units they're gonna, uh, use during the course of the year. And then we're in a garter, that feedback and say, which of these, um, you know, can we continue with or refine it?
Follow-up before me?
One?
Thank you. So the purpose for my question is, what is the impact on the school's network? Here we are, this is the middle school. So each, we brought in big internet pipes to all the schools, great. But we still don't know what bandwidth is being used. But we've been asking for this and haven't seen anything. So just, if this instruction is like sixty, seventy, eighty percent of what goes on in the classroom, and I've got all three middle schools using this and hitting it pretty hard. I want to understand if the network we have in place can support that kind of traffic. So as you look at this and you go deeper, would you please keep in mind what the impact is in terms of what, what you need? And then what you need to support this kind of instruction, so that when we go into budget and we start talking about those things, we, we know we either need more bandwidth or we're okay for a while. So.
I was, sorry.
Yeah, so that, I'm just asking you to keep that in mind, because it, it's a big deal.
The only three things I've heard in regards to that, I haven't heard of the network being a problem for accessing this program. I do think there's a need for some more access points at the middle and high school. That's, I've heard from technology. And there's a need for some additional, um, technology at the middle school. The Chromebooks, um.
I was just gonna ask, are there a lot on Chromebooks?
Are pretty prevalent, uh, prevalent in the elementary schools, but there's a need to, uh, have some more put deployed to the middle school as well as replace. We have like first gen iPads that just can't keep up with some of the things that we're asking them to do. So there's some of that as well. But that's something I can bring to technology and ask them to look into.
First gen iPads, it's all five years old.
Just don't worry.
Yeah.
Also, the whole school is being up pretty good.
Do you know if they're using their phones?
I don't.
Okay, any other questions? I did look at this online today. It's pretty, pretty smart.
Yeah.
Pretty smart software.
There's a lot there.
Yeah, there is. So middle school science update.
So like was talked about earlier, there's a pilot being done right now. Teachers getting some, um, next gen science training as well as looking at some science resource, resource pilots. So we had three teachers trained this past summer on how to facilitate workshops and we're partnering with another district with a grant. We have another workshop being held on our February workshop day. Here you can see the pilots that we have in and, um, Ms. Janisik, our science coach, has a rubric to assess these. We're also using Activate Learning, which are connected to, um, state and next gen standards. So kind of our next steps, as you see listed there, are, uh, workshops for teachers, uh, evaluate the rubric, uh, I mean, the resources, excuse me. And then come to a presentation to the board around, um, the next steps for that. I actually went to a great workshop on Friday for Next Gen and the gentleman, um, did an awesome job in presenting. So instead of many of my science classes where they tell you what you need to know, you study the vocab, you have a lab, you have a quiz, you have a test and then you move on. This is kind of like a, an inquiry model where kids are given a, um, a phenomenon or something that happens and they, you're exposed to like real science. And then they kind of do some of the higher level problem solving and thinking and walking through, making a claim. What's the evidence that you have to back up that claim? Um, and how can we refine that? So, um, teachers become the facilitators of the student learning instead of just telling kids what they need to know. Um, and I was in a room with, you know, 25 assistant superintendents and they had a great science workshop around. If you pour hot water into a soda bottle and put the top on, why does it shrink up? And he facilitated all that. And it was a great kind of example of what that would look like for kids. And I think that would be engaging and fun and great learning experience for kids as opposed to studying the words in bold print for the next quiz, so.
When I helped out last year with Amherst Street, we did all these little, uh, it was fun. I had more fun than the kids did.
Kids love it.
Yeah, they do. They love it. They really get into it. Um, building things and, um, it was, what did this solution have effect on? I can't remove all the things that they did, but it was, it was a good program. It was 21st century. So your presentation to the BOE was when you thought, maybe?
Uh, so the end of April, so.
Okay.
April-ish,ish.
April, alright. Get on the agenda.
Okay.
Alright. Any questions? So now we come to this part that I, um, wasn't quite understanding at all, but you, I'm sure you've been spammed, so I can. This is the roadmap to mathematics curriculum instruction changes K through eight.
Yep.
This is your plans for the future? Yeah?
Uh, the math team's been working from this the last three years. So I can share the last three years of work, but it's in the same format. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, so this kind of speaks to Eureka, but it also speaks to OGAAP, um, the Cuisinier rods, which you spoke about earlier of being in there for, for kids. The, um, number or cluster cards that we've been using. And it kind of ties in multiple areas for going forward of, uh, curriculum, instruction, assessment, resources and the PD. So I would say at the elementary level, we have a good foundation, tier one instruction. And we've worked with, uh, tier three, our special educators and some of our interventionists. Right now, we're working, um, on tier two. So how can we find some resources and best, uh, strategies for teachers to help kids that might be struggling within the classroom? So some small group, uh, instruction, a variety of assessments, fact fluency, the rods, the cars. We're, um, working on right now, doing some short videos that would help teachers understand how to do, um, targeted instruction with kids.
May I ask you to define tier one, two and three? Cause I'm a dummy on this.
So tier one is what all, all kids get for instruction. It's kind of our common curriculum. All kids, when you walk through the door, you get tier one instruction. So that's our general, uh, curriculum to all students.
Okay.
Uh, if students are showing some degree of difficulty, that would be tier two. So I would ask you to come into a small group. I might reteach things. I might give extra support. Title One teacher might come in and, um, partner in doing some of those sort of things. And then tier two and tier three, um, would be students, uh, smaller percentage that are really struggling that need specialized instruction to help, uh, remediate some gaps or, um, some challenges of learning.
Alright, thank you. So these are all the things that were done last summer, right?
Uh, so the left side has the timeline. Yep, sorry. And we're kind of in the winter section. Did you have questions?
Yeah, so this is, um, okay, I got that. Now, we're in winter, January through March. Okay. Why are these all checked or are they just a different way of putting a bullet? Okay.
I didn't, I didn't do the formatting, but we changed it.
I, I kind of figured that out after a while. It's, oh, it's just a substituting a bullet. Use the usual one.
So I would guess the road ahead for math and this, um, what is this called? Roadmap? The, one of the challenges the math team is sharing is we, we've leveraged most of our, um, coaching support. So we have one math coach that really works K eight. We have one, uh, elementary assistant principal that does part-time math. And then we have one assistant principal that's part-time, uh, math acceleration. So those three people can only do so much, uh, district wide. So that's why we've been leveraging the assistant principals and asking for their help and moving things forward. A lot of our teachers have been trained in OGAAP, uh, the Cuisinier rods and the number cards. So our math coach has been spending more time at the middle school with this kind of transitional phase of sixth grade with Eureka and what does seventh grade and eighth grade look like? But we've had consistent assessments in the elementary grades. So that's kind of our path forward of, we just shared today, as a matter of fact, an assessment that can be given for math that might be helpful for some teachers at the elementary level. But that's where our work is in that kind of tier two area aside from moving into the middle school sixty.
Ms. Van Quiver?
Yes.
Thank you. So, and if this is off base, I'll ask, just ask that you can address it at a different time. But if, um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, we spent almost 1.7 million dollars on remediation. So this is, this is all built in to this, correct? The resources that are used to remediate these tier two and three students are in district, in place and trained to do that. They have the resources they need.
Uh, for the most part, one of the areas that they also brought up is we are trying to reach out and schedule training for par- professionals, so they have the same content and knowledge. And then we've also started partnering with like 21st century or after-school programming. So kids, when they're there and they're doing their homework, they have help and support as well.
So you recall the, uh, I'll just call it the intervention that took place last spring from March until June? Where we had that, uh, sixty-four, that, the sixty-four thousand dollar question? Recall that, that money and how it was utilized? If that money were available again, would that find its way to support this kind of work? Or was that really completely separate?
The, that money was used for literacy and reading on grade level.
Wasn't used for math?
Very limited fashion, if any. Most of it was to get kids reading on grade level.
Okay. So, but if money were generally available, would it, could it be used to support this kind of tier two and tier three? Would it, would it be of value to have, I'll say it maybe another way. Would it be of value to the remedial work we believe we know we need to do? If extra money were, were available, would it help in this, these kinds of instances for tier two and three and even one for the kid who might just be almost struggling, but could still use an hour or two with some.
Um, I think when you look at kind of this piece that we were talking about earlier, we're at a phase now for ongoing continual support. Our teachers need people who can come in and resolve things in the moment, in the classroom, give them feedback and refine things. So to answer to your question, if we had a coach that could do that, or really stretch then with how many, you know, 12 to 15 schools for one person to schedule early, late, that, that's just a lot. Um, so would it make its way into the hands of these students? Yes, because right now, what we're trying to resolve in that tier two piece is we want our highly skilled teachers working with the kids that need the most help and support. But we're helping them with how does that look like? Because in literacy, I think they're pretty comfortable in learning how to help kids resolve their reading challenges. Right now in math, we need to kind of help them of building this continuum of like Cuisinier rods. We look at things from concrete. You can look at two bars and know that five and five is 10 and then bridging that all the way down the road to being abstract and be able to do that more in your head. So.
Have you guys given some thought in terms of what resources you would really need to support a program? I mean, in other words, you said if we had a coach, would that be one additional coach for the, for the, for the dozen schools we have? Or would you want one coach for three or four? I'm just asking because personally, I think there's going to be money available.
Mm-hmm.
In my mind, when we get to budget, I have a proposal. And I'm just curious, what kind of resources would we need to, to, in other words, just ask you now to start thinking about? Gee, if I had some amount of money, if I, you know, if I could paint my own picture, what I would like to see, I'd like to say, three more coaches. Or whatever that number is appropriate. So please consider something like that and, and test us. Maybe we can get there. You never know.
I think part of my role is also to look at all the, uh, curriculum areas and departments and advocate for all of them. So while this would be one of those areas, I, I do have some other areas that are asking for some help and assistance. And those are the ones that I've shared with Dr. Mosley as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Oden?
I, I was just gonna say, I think, um, the program that Mr. Kaufman was referring to, that the sixty-four thousand dollars was used for, was used as an after-school program, if I'm not.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was an after-school program and serving Title One, Title Two, Title, um, I'm sorry, Level One, Tier, Tier One, Two and Three. All happens within the school day, within, w- within the school by the special, special ed teachers. Uh, if you have reading teachers or reading co- math coaches. So that's a little bit of difference there, um, as far as that. And you could, if we had an after-school program, and in the past, we did have an after-school program at the Title One schools that was by, funded by Title One funds. Title Two and Title Three students were included occasionally in that. And sometimes, as you spoke, there are, are Level One students, or Tier One students who just need an extra support at times that were in there. So, uh, but I, I do want to say that's a difference there that, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars was used for an after-school program. Am I, am I right? Yeah, thank you.
My thoughts would be what if we could bring that into the day and it maybe not had to exclusively be after-school? Where if we could put extra help during the day while the kids were in school? So there wasn't that, that, that speaks to equity, right? The kids are in school, we want to help them while they're in school. Not everybody could stay after school. Not everybody has transportation. I mean, there were a lot of parts around that, that I, I would like to see if we could broaden. So we could cover more students, but within the day is what my thinking was. That's why I directed the question. Thank you. But I appreciate you clarifying that that was after-school.
Anything else on, uh, the, uh, plan here? Now we're going to progress report? This is the progress report of the plan that we've just looked at?
Yep, that, that all ties into kind of Eureka K eight, those pages there. They're kind of copied and we're lumped all together. But, um, that page you're on there and the subsequent page kind of gives a progress report for what we've completed so far this year. Um, and where we're going forward. So I guess, um.
Okay.
Going forward, going back to this piece here of updating. Going forward, going back to this piece here of updating, revising this plan and then kind of giving a broader picture by curriculum area for all curriculum, where we are and reporting out all of those. So we have an understanding of that and then next steps for each of these kind of program updates.
Okay, so I... Any questions on anything?
Hi.
Yes.
And Chair, I do have a question. I don't know if you or Dr. McKinney or even Dr. Mosley would be able to answer this. I'm kind of a hand-long person. I like to really sit in a class or workshop that you have. Is it possible or is it cost-effective? Or can I do that at all? Being a new board member, I don't know my limitation, so.
Good point. What we've done, it's a great question, thank you. So we've had requests from board members who wanted to like mew all-day kindergarten. So anytime that we get their requests, my request is let, make the request. But I like to hold it up to all board members as well so that they can see what's going on. And also too, we want to be as open as possible. The other thing that, there are meetings where we will have to have private meetings. So for instance, I meet with administrators to go over things that are going on. And not to say that we're hiding anything or nothing, but when I or when the team presents everything to the board, I want to make sure all nine members or eight members in this case get all the information all at the same time. So I think that, just as board members, when we talk a little bit about construction projects going on in the district, I know we've talked about Elm Street. I talked about, there's been some communication around New Cyril's. There's been some communication around Mount Pleasant. And, you know, no one's really talking about being done so well, but that was actually on the docket as well. I encourage board members, when we have that final discussion and we make some decisions, to take a walk through those schools to see what you're voting on, some of the needs. I think it's a great idea to be informative. So I'd like to coordinate that with the entire board and open it up to board members. So for instance, if there's a professional development on, I don't know, Eureka Math and that's something that you'd like to take a look at and also get some additional feedback. I have no problem opening that to all of you to come in and be a part and observe that conversation and also ask questions. I think it's a great thing to see the professional development. But I also would say I'd like you to go in the classrooms and see how it's being transpired out. I mean, how it's being played out.
Were you going to say something? Oh, well, just on that. So if we were to do that, were, are you thinking that you would prefer to have a group of eight of us trooping around behind the principal? Or would you prefer us to individually call the school and say, hey, can I arrange, you know, a tour with that individual principal?
So we've talked about that. And I would say that, number one, principals need to be involved. And I don't, I don't, don't, or just showing up and saying, I want to go in that classroom. Number two, I want to make sure the entire board has the opportunity to go in and see the same things as well. Also, I would say go into different schools. So for this situation, I said for full-day kindergarten, please go over to Light Street, take a look at that full-day kindergarten. Please go over to Dr. Chris and take a look at that full-day kindergarten. Then, once you're done there, go to Byby Centennial, take a look at that. Understand that you're taking a look at the programs, but that you're not evaluating teachers, you're not evaluating principals, because that's not what you're doing. And then come back and then we can have a discussion in terms of questions you may have or some great things you've seen. So the answer to your question is coordinate that while we're with this office. We notify the principals that you're coming. I use the full-day kindergarten piece because it's just easier to speak to. And then we'd be more than happy to have you come, come take a look at that.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I would like to ask you. And that one is, the 21st Century program is a separate program than the title-one after-school program. Is that correct? Who does the 21st Century people... Where does that money come from? The 21st Century?
21st Century grants.
Grant? Correct. Well, you, when Mr. Conrad was here, they cut out that, I think it was $300,000 for the after-school program, which made me very, very, very unhappy. I don't know, and I don't know that they have reinstated that or I don't know how we get ahold of that. But I would like to see if we can get that again because these kids need education.
Yep.
Then the title-one after-school program is another thing. The, I'm not, I'm sure the title-one lady gets good control over that. Are there any other programs in K through eight? Yeah, K through eight. The initiatives that are going on in addition to all the stuff that we might not know about? And you can assume that I don't know much about, because I have heard so many times of teachers being overwhelmed about new initiatives that come along and we're trying this and we're trying that. And I think it's important that we have basic programs that we apply to every school, you know? With some standardization so that kids in any school get the same sort of education. And I'm also interested in seeing that teachers are not overwhelmed with too many new things. Because I just, I think it's tough. I think they've gone through a very hard period for the last so many years. So if there are any, I would like to have them...
So Gail Casey coordinates the after-21st Century program. And we've been meeting with her since I came in in July. And if you'd like her to come and give a update on her program, she's welcome. That would be a great idea because she's doing some pretty cool things. But that kind of ties into your second part around title-one after-school program because we're looking to partner with 21st Century and the YMCA and summer, blast off to kindergarten in terms of kind of streamlining our summer programming and getting the most economical programming possible for all kids. So that's where we are right now. We're trying to put that together for the summer. In terms of at the elementary level, we're really only focusing on four things. It's math, which we spoke about, literacy, full-day kindergarten, and the fourth one is school-specific. So some schools are focusing on social-emotional learning or a culture piece, but...
But that's the only one that varies amongst?
Yes, those are the three. We're all, pretty much everything you saw in here. Math is all the Eureka stuff. Literacy includes the writing, some of the reading assessments we've talked about, full-day kindergarten. That's all district-wide, and we're working to kind of refine that for next year on the workshop day in February, so.
So we should see some real improvement in scores next year. Hopefully.
That's one measure of success, I would say, yes.
Well, we're still trying to hone it down on all the things that... Oh, there's another question I have that there is the... What's the fun?
Quantism.
Thank you. You should, you'd be surprised at what I was about to say. They evidently have a database where they store the data that comes out of that. And I don't think that we use that. Is that correct?
We use our own version in a Google spreadsheet doc that we're collecting the data in. It's more cost-effective than the one provided by the publisher. It's quite costly.
And you're happy with that?
We're beginning to build it. It's a start.
Okay. Just was wondering why we didn't use it since we seem to like the whole other program.
I just wanted to say, I believe you were asking about the after-school program that we had.
It was the 21st Century program.
It was, it was paid from title-one funds because it was only at title-one schools. And the 21st Century managed it. But they, I think it was somewhere around $300,000.
Yeah, I remember that. You and I both gasped when they cut that out.
We paid 21st Century to manage that grant. And I think when we went to the teacher-team facilitators, that's what, where that money went rather than the after... Am I, were you here then?
Yeah, but I don't know. I did check back on the grant if that...
I think that's what happened. That money went to fund the TTFs, the teacher-team facilitators. And 21st Century lost the income that we were paying them from title-one to fund the after-school program.
I just want to speak to the title-one brand in general. Number one, what we're seeing, different trends now. We're getting less money from less events. The second thing is that many of our private schools now are accessing this money as well. And that was not necessarily the case. So anytime we have, any, any school in Nashville, charter, public, or private, has the right to have access to title-one funding.
R O Logman? Or, okay.
Yes. So just be aware that that's a trend that's starting to happen that we didn't see too often, but it's happening. I wouldn't actually say here necessarily in Nashville. I think it's actually happening in quite other places as well, including where I came before working here, Sharon.
Is that a small percentage or what percentage is that? Money that they're, they can get from our funds?
I don't have a percentage number. The only thing I can tell you, it is growing in a sense that there are more requests that we've had now as opposed to, let's say, five years ago.
Oh, yeah.
I could give you a baseline from this year if you wanted to see where things are in the number of schools and anything else.
That's interesting.
Same with title-two. They're asking for funds too.
Okay. Yes?
So it's a geographic pool of money, then if you're in that zip code, whatever, then you have access to that particular geographic pool. Is that how it is?
Any school in Nashville, yes. That's the school.
So who gets to decide how it gets proportioned? You or the state?
Well, the state has to spend the money. Like what we try to do, I say try to do, let's just say we're doing a workshop on differentiated instruction. And that's something that a private school is interested in doing as well. What we do for cost-saving is that we open that particular training up here in the district for our Nashville teachers as well as teachers in the private center. And then we have a pretty good relationship, so they're willing to make some adjustments and have their teachers come over as well. But let's just say, you know, I don't want to say too much because we're on camera here, we're public. I don't want to start advertising. So why don't we, you know, just keep that out there. That's all.
Yeah, we'll think about it.
You don't know what to watch and, you know.
Okay.
I'll just leave it. We don't have any money, can't...
It's always the case, right? All right, I got a few action items here. Mr. Kaufman wants to know what MSP is, who they are, and what the funding is. I haven't, I looked up, Googled that. It's U.S. Department of Education.
MSP?
The U.S. Department of Education came up when I looked up that. And I guess I can't read my writing too well here. Something about the kit costs for the Summer Writing Institute?
Oh, of writing kits.
Yeah, you want to know that? And then we would like you to look into the network requirements for StudySync and make sure that we're happy with that. And then you've just offered to give Ms. Timmons some title-one information, so you might want to make that available to the whole committee. Anybody else have any?
We do title-two too. We'll do both.
Hey, you can do two through nine or one through nine if you want, but...
Title-three would be interesting.
I don't know what six, seven, and eight are, but I've only heard one, two, and nine.
I'm sorry, Chair. Can we just kind of make the one caveat to that request? We'll send it out to the entire board so everyone has the information?
Well, they'll get that, usually they get that with a packet. They get the packet every week, so that would cover it.
Just a quick clarification. Do you want all that information in the packet or do you want to send out the email?
No, in the packet.
Okay.
Don't, don't, yeah.
Is that title-one, two, and three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then just working...
Can you send it out electronically as well? Okay.
Well, it'll be on the website.
Yeah, well, because it's easier to... Easy.
I know, but it...
It's the paper curse.
You get the paper and then there's electronic there, so.
Yeah.
The paper curse.
In terms of April and May, did we talk about agenda items? Would this be...
Well, I'm going to let you decide what, unless something emergency comes up. Because there was, there was another...
April was also next gen, so.
February, do we have something for February?
We can talk about that.
Okay. Yeah, I want to meet with you anyways.
Yep, okay.
But I haven't got my homework done because it was in the hospital. Took four days out of my life and, you know. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I was on the committee last year. One of the things we did was, we probably generated a list of about 20-plus topics of things we would like. We kept an ongoing list. And we actually got a chunk of them done. And I would ask the committee to look at the list of topics that the previous committee had come up with for possible inclusion in this year's committee work. And secondly, back in September, I had submitted two policy proposals to this committee. One was IHAK, which is Character and Citizenship Education. And a second one, which I wrote myself called NOBOOK, N-O-B-O-K, which had to deal with the use of online educational resources. So I would ask that those, I mean, they were submitted back in September. I would ask that they be brought forward for consideration in the committee. Thank you. If you need me to send them, again, I can do that, Mr. Quayle.
Yeah, you know, I have it somewhere, but it's probably at the bottom of my...
Shall I send it to you? Shall I send it to Tara? Shall I send, I'll be happy to send it to the committee. I don't know what you want.
Send it to the committee. Yeah, you can do that. And then copy Tara, always copy Tara.
Sure.
She probably has it anyways. One, two, and three. All right, is there anything else? Well, I think it's wonderful. My first meeting, we did it in an hour and 55 minutes. I think that's brilliant.